Okay, John Wertz here, Montgomery County Tea Party. And tonight, we're interviewing Mr. Ray Sanders. He's running for Conroe Independent School District, Position Two. It is Tuesday, September 25th, and with me are Del Fessenden, John Boucher, Dennis Tibbs, and Pat Tibbs. And Ray, as we discussed, I'd like you to open up with up to five minutes of the opening, and we'll follow that up with Q and A.
Okay, I'll be real quick. So my name is Ray Sanders. I've been on the school board for Conroe ISD since November of 2010, when I was first elected. My background is, I'm a banker. I've been in the banking business for 34 years. I'm currently the president at Trustmark Bank for, I'm market president for Montgomery County for Trustmark Bank. I just started that position a month ago. Before that, I spent 31 years with Woodforest National Bank, and I retired last year, and I was called out of retirement. I was raised by a single mother who was a school teacher, public school teacher, for 32 years before she passed away. I had two younger sisters, one's passed, and the other one lives up in Huntsville area. I have two daughters, both are grown, both went through the Conroe ISD school system. One graduated from the Woodlands High School and one from the Woodlands College Park High School. My wife is retired. She spent 10 years with Conroe ISD as a paraprofessional and worked as a data technician at College Park High School, McCullough High School, or Junior High School. And before that, she worked for the prison system as a budget director. So I've lived in Montgomery County since 1995. I moved down here to open the first branch of Woodforest National Bank for them. I've always been interested in public education. My mother's father and mother were both public school teachers as well. My grandfather was a coach and a math teacher and became a school superintendent. And my grandmother was an English teacher and a librarian and worked in the public school system. So public school education was in my blood. I actually started out in kindergarten at Houston ISD and then moved around the state. My mom and dad divorced when I was seven, so I was raised by a single mom. And I understand public education, I think. And I think a lot of my finance background has helped me quite a bit on the budget side and understanding how schools are funded and how the state funding formulas work for school districts. I also am a licensed professional counselor. I became a chaplain many years ago, volunteer chaplain, and I worked in nursing homes and hospitals and volunteered my time there. And as a result of that, I decided to go back to school. And so I have a bachelor's degree in finance from San Houston State University, and I have a master's degree in counseling from San Houston State University. And I'm a licensed professional counselor with the state of Texas, and I'm also a board certified national counselor.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Hanks, again, for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Probably the elephant in the room is what we can start with. Our property tax bill, half of it is CI SD. We're almost half. The appraisals by our appraisal board have continued to go up over the years. And it's great that it looks like you've voted to reduce the tax rate.
Yes.
How do we get, can we ever get below the massive amount of property tax that we're paying towards CI SD? I mean, they've got a huge budget, certainly it's a big school system.
Yes.
What is, what can we do about that?
I think the issue lies with the state. The state continues to reduce funding. And what it does is it's required school districts to require more and more local funding. While, since I've been on the board, we have reduced the tax rate by a cent and a half, you're exactly correct, the more taxes, you're paying more taxes than you were since 2010. And that's simply because the appraisals have gone up. A lot of the school's budget is reflective of the growth in the district. There's been, on average, about 1,500 new students join the school district each and every year. The biggest issue in budgeting comes in that you don't know where those kids are going to come in. Are they going to come into the elementary schools or the junior high schools or the high schools or the intermediate schools? And so about every five or four or five years, the school district pays to have a demographic study done and tries to identify where those growth pockets are going to be so that they can try and identify, where do we need to have the next school, and how are we going to be able to pay for it, those kinds of things. So there's a, there's a lot to it as far as understanding how to manage the growth of the students. And again, we don't know whether these students are all going to ride the bus, are they not all going to ride the bus? So there's a lot of different variables that go into the student populations that come in. I think the biggest issue is state funding. This year, the Robin Hood effect is going to take away over $10 million out of Conroe ISD's budget that we have to return back to the state of Texas. So they pay us, and then we have to turn around and pay it back to them because we're considered a fast-growth district. And because of that fast growth, we're actually penalized.
What is that budget number again?
The, the, the budget this year is over $500 million.
Okay. Okay, no?
Okay, start out with, with hopefully, an easy one. Why do you think, in your opinion, you've drawn challengers for this race? You're an incumbent, you've been doing the job, have they got issues with what you've been doing?
You know, I've not really heard from either one of the, of the two candidates that are opposing me, so I'm not really sure. I can't speak to why they chose to run or not run. I think I've listened to the people. I have an email address that is public, and when people respond to me, I try to respond back to them. So I think I've been attentive to the needs of the school district. If I haven't, I certainly would, would like to hear what I could do more, and I would certainly listen and try to respond to that appropriately.
Okay, okay. Following up a little bit on John's question about funding and so forth, I think I understand your logic. Should we go all the way to the point where school funding is 100% from the state and 0% local?
I think so. I think the state of Texas has in the Constitution the right that every person that lives in Texas gets a free public education. And I think so. I think when the lottery was first introduced, it was proposed as being all of the proceeds would go into state education. And of course, we all know that it goes into the general fund with the state of Texas. And then the state legislature gets to decide how it's going to be spent.
Are there any downsides to that approach? Why do you think the legislature may not have embraced that?
I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that there's so much want and need for local control of school districts. There's over 1,000 school districts in the state of Texas. I've actually spoken to some state legislatures before and said, if you consolidated districts and you could actually economize those districts, if you have seven districts that could be consolidated into one, all of a sudden, you can reduce administration, and there's some economies of scale that can be created by doing so. But what I've been told is, oh, that's just not going to happen because of local control. Everyone feels as though they would lose their local representation in the district. Well, we all know that the same happens on a larger scale with the state legislature and the Texas Senate and the US Congress and the United States Senate. So we know that there can be representatives that represent that entire population of people. But I think there's been a lot of people that have said they just don't want to lose that, what they feel like is local control of the school district.
Okay, my time's up. Dennis?
John Boucher, just as passionately as you've talked about state funding, we've had people talk about local funding, just to let you know. So that was my question, actually, I wasn't going to ask, but I'll move on to a different one. So I liked your answer regarding teacher compensation being based on the value rather than their tenure?
Yes.
So who would be the arbiter of determining how much value someone brings to the organization? I mean, I think we can agree that teaching to the test makes it really difficult to truly determine a teacher's effectiveness as an educator.
That's right.
So have you given any thought as to how a teacher's effectiveness can be more accurately gauged?
That's a great question. I do believe that there are ways to do that. I, I, I need to put a lot more thought into that.
Fair enough.
But, you know, there are master, what I would call master teachers today, that mentor those that are new to the profession or recently have come into the profession. Those teachers haven't stayed in that profession that long without learning some tricks of the trade and some, some things. Those teachers are more valuable for what they can provide. When I talk about value, I'm talking about value to the classroom, value to teaching younger, I say younger, I don't mean that in a, in a negative way, but teaching those that are brand-new to the profession, ways of classroom management and ways to promote positiveness in the classroom and ways to work with the, the parents of those students that those, though, you don't just learn that in, in an educational background at a college or university. And so to me, that's value. And having those kinds of teachers represents a lot more than just, you've been here seven years, so you get this raise, or 10 years, or 15, or 20 years. Many times, it's not the number of years that you've been in the profession, but how you've grown in that profession. And so that's where somehow, if we could create some sort of a, of a way to be able to award those teachers that, I know, for instance, we have one school in our district that, the reason we didn't get an A on our, our evaluation as a, as a district is because we have one school that still needs to improve on the state testing. And so what we're doing is we're adding coaches, academic coaches to that campus. We're also adding master teachers that these teachers at that campus can kind of watch and model and learn from. And so again, those teachers that are taking their time to do that, I think that is added value over and above just teaching in the classroom.
Good timing.
Cancel the time. Okay. Do you have some idea of what the average class size is in CI SD?
It depends on the grade, because I know the state has a 22 to 1 ratio for fourth grade and under. So they can't, there cannot be more than 22 students in a classroom without a waiver from the DEA. Now, we have requested waivers every year because, again, if we have 22 students in one fourth grade and we have three fourth grades and they all have 22 kids, and we have a new fourth grader that comes into the district, then we either have to hire one teacher and split those up, or we ask for a waiver. And so I believe that Conroe ISD does a good job of making sure that they use those waivers properly. Is there too many people that can be in a class? I agree, I think yes, there is. I don't know what that number is. I think, again, it has to do with what grade level you're in. When I was in college, I was at Texas A&amp;M in a class of 300 in a history class, and I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's what it was. I don't know that there's a, a magic number that you can say.
What's the number for high schools, the upper end of the scale, maybe? Is it 35, 40?
It's probably 35 or 40, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I was just looking at the two numbers you listed here, 7,000 employees and 60,000 students. And that's, that turns out to be four or five employees for every class.
Okay.
It seems like a lot, I mean, a janitor can take care of more class, right? A teacher may be only one class.
Right.
But why are there so many people involved? I mean, you don't need an administrator for every class, right?
That's right.
So why are there four or five or so county employees for every class?
Sure. Well, there are a lot of different departments. We have machinery on every campus that has to be maintained, it has to be, has to have prevent, preventive maintenance done, it also has to have maintenance done. We have people within the district that drive buses throughout the county. We have a 348-square-mile district. It's one of the largest in size in the state of Texas.
Okay. All right, it seems like a lot, a lot of staff per class, but that's good.
Well, I mean, to add to it, I'll tell you, my wife was the paraprofessional at College Park High School. They had 3,000 students, and she maintained the entire grade book schedule and the class schedule. One person did that. So I know that they do try to be efficient.
For the whole school?
For the whole school, yes, sir. So every teacher had to submit grades, and she had to make sure that they were all posted properly and make sure that every student was accounted for. So I do know that they, personally know, that they do try to be efficient in their use of, of people. I mean, one per, now, my wife's a good bookkeeper, but that one person did that. And so we have, you know, every high school needs at least one of those people. And so I think they try to be as efficient as they can. There may be areas where we can improve on that efficiency. And I want, I've always said, as a member of the school board, I want us to be in kind of continuous improvement. I don't want us to ever think that we've gotten there, so to speak. I think that we can always improve.
So in your wife's case, she would be like a .02 employee for class?
Probably.
There could be a lot more of her.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So on underspending category, how much money does the district cabinet account for contingencies?
Yes.
And is there a mountain statutoryity required? You mentioned that CI SD maintains accounts for general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, food service fund, and that the amounts vary. Let's see, the district tries to keep approximately three months of expenses in, but right now, I think, what's the amount that they have for the, I guess, unencumbered expenses?
They try to keep that between 25% and 28%, which would be about a fourth.
Okay.
Which is about three months.
Which is about how much money? Do you know? Off the top of your head?
I'm sorry, I don't. I don't recall right now.
Okay. So I've heard a number thrown out of about $155 million.
That sounds about?
In the bank, but that, that's almost, takes care of six months instead of just three months. Why so much?
Sure.
Would you be in favor of returning that to the taxpayers somehow?
Or spending it instead of a bond?
Good point. Well, I do know that the debt service fund alone, they keep about $80 million in that fund, because they have to make semi-annual payments out of that fund. I do know that the school district, since I've been on, has made sure to put money into the debt, additional money into the debt service fund, and they've used that in many ways to reduce the amount of debt. For instance, there's $10 million worth of bonds that are coming due over the next two years that we could spend $7 million in defeats so that we don't have to make those $10 million worth of payments. So we're going to save a little over $2 million in payments over the life of those bonds that we're not going to have to pay because we're able to call them and pay them off early, only because we put an extra $10 million into the debt service fund. So when you're looking at the whole thing, it's not all in operational cash available to spend today. Some of it is dedicated. That's why I said, I think there's about 2.3 or 2.4 million that stays in the food service fund, and that is government, that's federal government money. It can only be used for certain things. So there's some, some restrictions on that. The other thing about keeping the three months of reserves is the state of Texas pays the school district on an average daily attendance. So that's why attendance is so important within the district. It doesn't matter how many kids are enrolled, it matters how many come into school. And so the thought is that the school has, we started school in mid-August. Well, the school, the state of Texas doesn't pay you the first day, they pay you after the end of September. So there's 45 days there that we have to meet operational costs without having a dollar from the state of Texas. Now, yes, we have money in the bank, and part of that is that reserve that we keep to do that. If you look at the CI SD, I'm sorry, if you look at Huffman ISD, they announced last night that they have a big financial problem, and it's because they don't have money. There are a lot of districts in Texas that actually have to go and borrow money for about the first 30 to 45 days of school because they don't have reserves. And then they have to take the money that they get in from the state in order to pay that loan back.
Can I have a turn?
Oh, he looked at me, I'm sorry.
Well, he jumped in on that, so he just took it.
I'm skipping.
Remember that. Okay, your answer, is the board currently fulfilling its obligations? And you list the obligations there. One of them is to approve the budget.
Yes.
I confess with all, all the things that are opportunities out there, I've only been to two, three school board meetings, whatever. Could you, hopefully, it's more than just a rubber stamp. When you say approve?
Yes.
You're looking at it and questioning the, the budget and trying to find areas to cut, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So it's a negotiation process?
Absolutely, it is. The school board has a budget workshop that is, it happens generally about March or April, and they're beginning to look at next year's budget. And so the idea is, they present something to us, and then we get to take a look at it. They try to, the biggest piece, obviously, in the budget is payroll. So the biggest piece that comes before the board in that first budget workshop is what kind of a raise or what kind of increase are the teachers going to get. And so the, the administration provides that to the district on a ca, I mean, to the board. On occasions, I've seen the board raise that up, and on other occasions, I've seen where we've kept it flat as to what it was last year. So it varies, again, depending. I do know that about a 3% increase in salary amounts, about a $9 million increase in the budget. So the idea is to try and keep that, and of course, that's assuming we don't hire anybody new, which, as the district grows, that there are needs. And so the idea is that, yes, we do that. So then, after we have gone through as board members and had this budget workshop, we will give our feedback publicly and sometimes, you know, after board meetings, sit down with the finance people and talk about those kinds of things. And then after that is done, kind of a budget is prepared, and the school district does two public hearings on the budget before it's ever voted on for approval. And at each of those public hearings, anyone is allowed to come up and speak about the budget or the budget process or anything within the budget. And so we have two public hearings on the budget after we've had the board workshop and before we vote on the budget.
And those are posted on the calendar for the ISD?
Yes, sir. They are posted as public items, yes.
Okay, John?
I'll get to go.
Okay.
One of the questions on here is, what is one significant way that local school districts can reform themselves to increase educational achievement? And you concluded your answer by saying it takes community involvement, which made me bristle just a bit because it sounded too close to it takes a village. But the question is, so what role would parents play in improving educational achievement, if any? And how could you help to facilitate or encourage parental involvement in the educational process?
I'd be glad to answer that. So there's two, two things, I would say. The school that I mentioned earlier that needs to improve is predominantly low socioeconomic status, and it's also predominantly Hispanic. And so we've had to reach out to the local community there because we want to make sure that the, the students may be hearing one message at school, and they may be hearing a different, different message at home. And so we're trying to work with the parents and those that are taking care of those students to make sure that they're encouraging and that they're reinforcing the message of the school about education as far as reading and, and doing, making sure you do your homework and things like that. And so when I talked about it takes a community, I wasn't meaning to say that someone was at fault, I was simply saying, we have engaged churches, we have engaged other community leaders in and around that school to try and reach out to that community to encourage them to help improve that school. So that's one part of it. The other thing that the school district does is, this past year, we hired one person who is a licensed professional counselor who is working, she's a crisis prevention specialist, and she's working towards a state designation as a crisis prevention specialist. And the idea is that we are reaching out to the entire Conroe ISD community and trying to provide kind of psychoeducational things that can help students achieve better and do better in school. For instance, there was a, a recent discussion at the Woodlands High School on anxiety, and we had over 200 between parents and students come and attend that, and it was led by this person within the district. So they were actually doing a mental health fair at Conroe High School in a couple of weeks. And that, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're engaging the community in different ways to try and help the population of that school do better and be better.
It's funny that you brought that up, because right down the hallway here is an organization that does just that, and I asked them if they work in schools and so forth. So I don't think that's coincidental that they're here tonight, so. Mr. Tibbs?
Okay. Does the, does the school board vote on the superintendent's salary and the other, you know, top official salaries?
They approved the superintendent's salary.
Just his?
Just the superintendent's salary.
And how much does he make right now?
$300,000.
And his helper, what's he made?
Well, there's, there's deputy superintendents and there's associate superintendents, and I think the deputy makes $189 or $90?
And how are they chosen?
They are chosen by the superintendent.
Okay.
And the board has to approve those positions, but they don't approve the salaries, they, there's a, there's a limit that's set. Each year, it's interesting you bring that up, each year, the school district meets with the Texas Education Agency, and they do a statewide salary survey, and they look at each job, and when I mean each job, I mean each and every, from a maintenance worker to a bus driver to a paraprofessional, and they look at each job and they look and compare the salary of the Conroe ISD employee for that job to kind of the state average to try and see how, how much that, that position is paid or should be paid in comparison to those around them.
Do they compare it to industry?
Yes, that, that's, they, they measure it to the schools, not to industry. That's correct. No, I think if it was compared to industry, they would be paid a lot more.
You can't tell that by looking at the Montgomery County salary. Well, let me ask you also, where, the question is, how could CI SD lower the tax rate? And you mentioned, could be lowered if the state of Texas could reform the state's school funding formula. Does that mean that there's no room for cutting spending in CI SD?
Oh, no, sir, that's not what I'm saying at all.
They can be more lean?
No, I think, I think, I was thinking about the biggest chunk. Like I said, $10 million went back to the state of Texas because of the Robin Hood effect.
And that's not all of what you got from the state, is it?
No.
What is the $10 million a portion of?
It's a portion of all the state funding that we need.
So like 10 million out of 100 million that the state funded, or 10 out of 11?
They're, they're about 26% of our budget.
Okay. And the budget was how much?
Over $500 million.
Okay. So you had to give back $10 million of about $125 million?
That sounds about right.
Okay, okay, thanks.
What was your public position on reappraisal of homes during hurricane?
I voted in favor of it. I actually voted to talk about it even though I lost the vote.
The first go-around?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Bush and I voted in favor of it, and there were others that voted against it.
Okay, and then it passed the second time around?
Yes, sir.
Or when there was a vote, I guess?
Yes.
The one for, okay. Okay, on September 10th, here's, here's a media referral. There was an article in the Golden Hammer about the fact that our extremely high taxes aren't going to either children or to the teachers, but to administrative support. He seems to back that up with numbers that illustrate that the budget increased $17,000 of the $495 million budget, or roughly 3% to only 2.2% increase in student population. Okay, so the budget increased almost 3% and the student population was 2.23. He calls that the spending explosion factor, which means spending grew 32% faster than student enrollment. In fact, the article indicated the CI SD administration grew 2.85% faster than student enrollment. Do you agree or disagree with this, and how do you reconcile that?
I disagree a little bit because I think a lot of the information was taken from the DEA website, and so school districts have to include the number of teachers that they have, and anyone else is considered administrator. Well, I don't think that's right. I think, I think there's a lot of other support staff and others that aren't quote administrators. And so I think the other thing that article talked about was New Caney ISD and how well they had done, but their tax rate is 38 cents higher than Conroe ISD's tax rate. That wasn't mentioned in the article. I think that administrator to classroom teacher ratio is important. I don't want a heavy administration. I think our administrator, actual administrators to teacher ratio is a lot lower than other districts. Our district has received awards in the past for its financial effectiveness and its academic effectiveness, and I think that the, that shows that we're trying to do a good job of making sure that the dollars that are spent on education are spent on education.
Who issues those rewards? Who issues those rewards?
It's, the ERG is the, I'm trying to remember the, actually, the state comptroller is one of them. They issue an award. And then, the other one is an independent organization that issues those.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I can't think of it right now.
That's okay.
My brain's going, find the answer and I can't find it. So, I apologize.
Don't worry.
Okay. Obviously, everybody's in favor of increasing educational achievement. There's been some discussion having to do with, well, let me step a little bit to the side of that. Curriculum, of course, is key to educational achievement. Has the, what has been discussed in CISD with respect to Common Core? Have been, has there been a push to accept it? Has there been resistance to keep it out? What, what do you know about the UN Program for International Baccalaureate? And again, what discussions have taken place within the context of the school board or with the administrator or whatever?
Actually, the State Board of Education decides the curriculum that's going to be taught within all the Texas ISDs. So, we do not have any say in what's going to be taught. That's set, that is set by the Texas State Board of Education.
So, we've heard that there's been the Common Core's coming through the back to work through some teachers. Have you heard that?
I have heard that. I have not, I've heard that statement, but I have not heard specifically, this teacher at this school is doing this. That I have not heard.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess your answer confuses me in part because, for instance, we do know, we've seen the publications that say that the Magnolia ISD has the UN International Baccalaureate program. We've heard that CISD does not. If this all were mandated from the state level, where's the disparity?
I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Because it's my understanding that 2011 Senate Bill 6 stripped the State Board of Education from a lot of its ability to guide the curriculum. And all of that is more at a local level, basically with ISDs was my understanding.
Well, the State Board still approves every textbook that I'm aware of.
And how many textbooks are there?
I don't know the answer to that question either.
Pitifully few is my understanding.
I was about to say, I think the number of textbooks is dwindling rapidly.
In favor of the laptop, whatever?
Yes, that's correct.
They're in the problem.
And yeah, and varying does like a problem.
Yeah, the electronics not overshot.
That's right.
That's, that's a great question about who is providing the oversight for those. To my knowledge, it's not the school boards.
And therefore, yeah. The things that I'm hearing, and again, my youngest is 30 years old. I don't have any insider knowledge. But the things that I'm hearing is that it's not good at all. And so, I would encourage you that if you're not familiar with those, that thrust, that you please do look into it.
I will.
John?
Kind of along that same line, I'd like to get your feelings on standardized testing, pros and cons and maybe what you think should be included in that.
Sure. Under the No Child Left Behind Act, what I understand is the federal government said every state must have a state test. And so, the state of Texas has a state test. I personally don't like them. I think we spend entirely too much time working on state testing. I think there's other ways to try and gauge how students are doing in school other than a state standardized test. That's my opinion. There are so many rules to the state testing. You know, if a student came yesterday in the state and tests tomorrow, they have to take the test. You know, it's my understanding that students can't stay home. They have to take the test. And so, there's just a lot of rules about the state testing. And, you know, the way we do schools, we have elementary school, which is typically pre-K or K through 4th. And we have an intermediate school, which is 5 and 6. Will they grade in 3, they grade in 5 and so forth? Well, the way we do our intermediate schools, it actually hurts us by not having K through 6 in a, in a school. And so, there's just so many different rules. And I think districts have learned how to quote, "play the game" a little bit. And I'm not in favor of them. Should be blind.
Thank you.
In this area, we have dozens of special purpose districts. And it seems like at any given time, one or two or three or more of those are talking about another bond. So, the bonds are probably 20 or 30 years and they seem to come up every two or three years. So, there could be a dozen outstanding bonds. But you know, for CISD, if when you pass a new bond, do you try to pay off old bonds with that money? How many outstanding bonds are there with CISD?
I can't tell you the number of bonds. I know the dollar value is over $1 billion, over $1.1 billion. I do know that every bond is, has to be approved by the voters. So, the school board doesn't, the school board can say there's going to be a bond election, but they can't decide whether it's going to pass or not. I do know that since I've been on the board since 2010, because my background is finance, as rates began falling, I went to our finance people and said, hey, why don't we try to see if we can refinance some of these higher rate bonds or lower rate bonds? And they said, oh, we can do that. I said, well, hang on a minute. I want to also make sure that we don't extend out the maturity of these new bonds with the old ones. And so, we actually were able and have been able to refinance more than $100 million worth of bonds since 2010, simply because rates fell. It was, it's not magic and it's not because I'm smart. I just know that when rates fall, you can refinance and lower your rate. But many times, I also know they'll lower their payment by extending out the maturities. And we chose not to do that. So, we were able to save, in effect, future payments of more than $100 million. With that being said, you're right, the bonds typically are going to be about four-year bonds. They put a factor in the bonds of about 6% for either inflation or added costs or future rate increases and things like that. The bond, the last bond that we did has lasted a little bit longer simply because rates fell. And costs didn't go up as rapidly as they anticipated in the increase.
So, long-term bonds, like 10 or 20 years, are rare?
Well, we do 20-year bonds.
Okay. Well, what were you just saying, is it like a four-year bond?
No, I'm saying, I'm sorry. When I'm talking about new bonds that are going to be issued, when the new, when the school board has a new bond election, what they try to do is look out forward about four years and try to. Because again, we get a, an update on what's going on in the area as far as growth. And then, we try to project, okay, we're going to need a new high school here or a new junior high or a new flex school. And so, we know that how much each one of those costs. And then, we're trying to project out over the next four years, how much bonded indebtedness are we going to ask the public for to be able to meet all of these growth needs?
And so, that's how you issue the bonds?
Yeah, well, yes, they're voted on and then, right, right. Then they, then they, what they would do, again, we're not going to, I mean, the last bond was $487 million and so, the work was actually $527 million. So, we did pay a lot of cash for long-term assets from the, from the fund that we had. We were able to do that, again, because rates were low.
What was the rate on the bond?
They're varying rates, again, because you, you don't spend all $487 million at once. You only spend it as you need it. So, we may issue, you know, $15 million worth of bonds or $20 million worth of bonds. And so, whatever the market rate is at that time. And so, that's why you asked the question earlier about the number of bonds? I don't know because they're only going to issue what they need, say, for the next, you know, several months of construction. And then, when that's used, in other words, you don't pay interest cost on money that's sitting in the bank right now. So, the idea is you wait until you need that funding available, then you go out and sell the bonds.
Okay. I think it's about a dozen. Is that right?
I think it's more than that. I was going to say there's probably.
Because they're got a billion.
15 or 20.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, one was just, well, it was 13 on there, one was just out by last month.
That, that may very well be.
Yeah. Okay. Pass. Phil?
Okay, I'm struggling with exactly how to, to approach this one. Do you believe lack of funding from the state is the primary reason? And you got off into a somewhat related area there. We say students need to be able to come to school ready to learn.
Yes.
Fully agree. But the question is, whose responsibility is that? For instance, if the student comes to school without his lunch bag, is it the school district's responsibility to provide that lunch?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe legally, but ethically?
Well, the Bible that I read says I'm supposed to love my neighbor as I love myself. And if I find a man who needs to, he's hungry and needs to eat, in order for him to work, I'm probably going to feed him. I don't know how to answer the question any more than that. But, you know, I don't, I know legally, yes, we have to, we have to provide them the lunch. I do think it's important because they're kids. I mean, many times, kids don't get to pick their parents. You know, they, it is what it is. And some have good homes to come from and some don't have good homes to come from. And I think it's, I think it's, personally, I think it's unfair that that happens, but it happens. And I do know that we still have kids in Montgomery County that don't come home, that actually don't come to school well-fed and well-clothed and they're not clean. And we have to unfortunately take care of them. And to make them not stand out in the classroom, we may have to help them in some ways. I know that the school district works with Montgomery County Food Bank. We have a backpack program. And every Friday afternoon, we put food in backpacks for students to take home because we know that's all the food they're going to get for that weekend.
Okay. And maybe apples and oranges, but I think when you and I went to school, there was no such programs as that. Would you agree with that?
Probably so.
And we survived, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
One of the other abuses I've heard of, and I'll just kind of close on this and ask you if you've heard of anything of this nature. I have heard that schools are all too quick to put children on Ritalin because children who are on medical, whatever, the state pays more money for that, for those special needs children, whatever the special needs are. Have you ever encountered anything like that in, in your tenure?
No, I have not. As an LPC, I'm not familiar with the schools making or requiring students be medicated at all. I, I know that, you know, there are extensive testing that can be done on kids for all kinds of reasons. But no, I'm not familiar at all with schools requiring students be on any kind of medications.
Well, I'm just saying, they're too quick to do that. And just one quick question. Who oversees those kinds of abuses, if they exist? Would it be school counselors or?
School counselors are not. Schools counselors spend most of their days doing guidance. In other words, trying to direct children, and I use the term between kindergarten and 18-year-olds and 12th grade, helping them, direct them in ways that are going to make them successful and help them.
Okay. John?
Okay. Well, I was reading through this and one thing I sort of usually focus in on is community service. And I see you do a lot of community service or have. And I'm certainly thankful for people like you who step up and serve your community. Can you tell me which experience or experiences gained from your volunteer opportunities that helped prepare you for this position? You know, what are you still involved in and what's the time commitment of this position you are seeking?
Sure. So, being on the school board takes on average about 20 hours a month. Between the time, we get our school board book, they call it, which we get that generally on a Friday before the meeting on the following Tuesday. So, I'm one to read the entire report before I come to a board meeting. I don't want to come to a board meeting unprepared. And so, I spend time doing that. I also serve as the chair of the audit committee, which takes another hour of my day about once every three months. But then, again, I work closely with the finance manager and I want to understand the books and the budget because that's my background. And so, that's, that's about the 20 hours a month. Other things that I am involved in, I'm, I attend celebration church here in the Woodlands. The pastor and I are close friends. He asked me to teach a class. So, I'm right now teaching a class on Sunday nights called Building Better Relationships Through Communication. Being a counselor, I have a little background in that. And then, I also, I'm an LPC supervisor, which means I have a separate designation with the state of Texas to be able to supervise new counseling interns, those who have graduated but have to get so many hours under the state of Texas guidelines before they can become an LPC. And I actually supervise two people in Conroe ISD now. One of them is a counselor and the other one is kind of in a special counselor position. And so, I do that free of charge. And then, other than that, I'm a part-time counselor. I still see clients. I'll see one Thursday night, so I do that as well. And then, you know, I've been involved, as you saw, with Interfaith of the Woodlands for eight years. Held many different positions there. I still am on the Interfaith Advisory Board for Interfaith of the Woodlands. And I've been involved in a lot of different organizations in Montgomery County.
Thank you.
Another important issue is, is school safety. As far as I know, we haven't had any mass shootings in Conroe, have we?
Not mass shootings, no, sir.
And I understand that the CISD has made a decision not to arm staff and instructors.
Yes.
So, you think that the police force you have is enough for every, does every campus have a policeman? And is the decision not to go further than that a board vote or administrator vote or teacher vote? Who made the decision and how many officers do you have?
Well, the, I'll start with the policy of the district. The policy of the district mirrors the state, the House for Marshals and things like that. So far, the board would be the one to have to approve allowing teachers to carry firearms in the classroom. And so far, the board has chosen not to do that. So, again, it's all seven members of the board would have a vote in that. This, Conroe ISD just approved new positions so that we could try to have, right now, we do not, but we should try to have enough police officers so that there would be at least one police officer per campus. We have 62 campuses. So, and they're stretched from South County to North County to East County to West County. So, it's, it's a difficult proposition to hire enough police officers. I think we approved 13 new positions. And I think all last year, we hired four or five. So, it would take us several years to even try to get these 13 hired. So, safety is important. I worry about kids every day. I do know that the police department we have is specially trained. I have gone and firsthand experienced some of the training that they do. And I'll give you a for instance. They actually have, at the police station, training videos where they have students walking down hallways with guns. And they get to react to that video and how they respond and react. So, I know that our police officers are specially trained to deal with students, which is a different population than sheriff's deputies and other police officers dealing with adults. And so, it takes a little bit of a, of a training and education to deal with students. Because we all, I mean, we all love our kids, but our kids don't always make the best decisions and choices. And so, police officers have to deal with that in a special way.
What's the budget for the CISD police force?
I don't know directly. I could, I mean, I could get that information for you. I'd be glad to get that.
But it's like 60 something officers? And it's guards or they have separate headquarters?
Yes, they do have a separate headquarters because we have to have a place to take kids that have become violent because we can't just take them to the county jail. Unless they've committed a felony crime, we don't take them to the county jail.
Do you know if any of the staffers have ever asked to be able to carry their own guns?
I have never had anyone within the district ask me. So, and I've not heard of that before. It worries me as a school board member and as a parent of it. Our teachers already have enough on their hands teaching the kids. And it worries me because even if they were to carry a firearm in a locked container, I know kids are smart enough to figure out who's got a gun and who doesn't have a gun. And it would concern me if there were teachers in the school building that had guns, even if they were locked up. Because I know kids are pretty ambitious and pretty, they'd figure out a way. That's my fear, is that they would figure out a way how to get access to the handgun. And that scares me. And so, I would rather leave it to those that are trained to handle those kinds of situations. You know, we do monitor social media accounts for kids. The state added that we actually have to, even if they're away from campus, if one student makes a threat towards another student away from campus, the school still has to get involved in that now. get involved in that now. And so we actually have had some incidences where that has happened, where threats have been made and we've had to deal with that. We've actually had our police department knock on doors of homes because there's been threats. And if there's guns in the home and, and there's a, a potential threat, then the police department will deal with that. They are licensed police officers.
Well, the CISD police officers, are they armed?
Yes, ma'am.
They just used to be?
Yes, ma'am. Since I've been on the board, they're armed. Yes, ma'am.
So we've got time for one more question? I've got a question for you. And I, I didn't ask any of the other candidates this question, but it's just not my hard task to give these questions, so I will. How many students are in the Deaf Ed program in Conroe ISD? Do you know? And, and, you know, what do you know about that program? And are there any ways to improve? My wife works in the school system in deaf education.
I don't know how many students are in the Deaf Ed program. My middle sister was born deaf, so I have a passion for, for deaf children.
That's why it was on my heart?
I guess so. My, my sister since passed away, she had other issues as well. But I, I know a little bit of sign language and, and I, you know, once a month, the school board members, that we do what we call ambassador awards. We go out into the schools and we find a student and a staff member and we award them ambassador awards. And every school, that happens once a year. And so I've had the fortune to go and give away special needs students who have won the ambassador award. And it's a special time.
Okay, well, this is the time where we kind of wrap it up. Do you want to do a, do a five-minute closing?
Okay. The one, the one, I, I just feel like I don't want, want to make sure this is said. I know there's discussion about a new bond issue. And we don't have a clue how much it's going to be. I got a book at the last board meeting that was about two and a half or three inches thick and it went through every facility and every potential possibility. And when I ended up adding it up, it was over 860 million dollars. And I'll just tell you, that scared me to death. I am not in favor of an 860 million dollar bond issue. I do know that, like I said last time, the, a 487 million dollar bond was approved, but yet the work totaled over 527 million dollars. And I wanted to make sure that we paid cash for that. Since I've been on the board, I've tried to make sure, they used to finance school buses with bonds. And I said, wait a minute, school buses aren't going to last as long as that bond is. So we began starting to pay cash for those. And so the idea, I believe, is long-term assets, probably like our homes, we financed them for a longer period of time. I think those can be financed, but other things we need to pay cash for. We don't, you know, HVAC and, and things like that are going to be replaced and I think we need to have a reserve for that. I, I've done personal financial counseling and I tell people, have an emergency fund and then have a replacement fund. And so again, I think, you know, it's wise for the school district to make sure we have those kinds of funds available so we're not having to go out and borrow money for a long period of time. What's the right number for the next bond? I can't tell you at this point. I don't know the answer. I do know that at the last school board meeting, there was a facility planning committee approved by the board. I don't believe it's all been filled yet. I think they're working on filling that right now. But this is a group of community people from the entire Conroe ISD that will sit down and go through that big book and then they will decide what they believe needs to be there versus what doesn't need to be there. Then that facility planning committee will bring to the board a recommendation for what the bond should be. And then the board will have an opportunity, just like we do each year with the budget, to decide, does this need to be in, should this not be in? And then the board will vote either to have a bond election or not. And if the board approves having that bond election, then we'll know what the dollar amount will be and what it will be used for. So it's, I, I know there's a lot of talk about bonds and debt scares me. I don't want to, I, I've seen people personally who have been indebted to almost death and I don't want that to happen for Conroe ISD or school district. I want us to be financially responsible and I want to make sure that we're taking care of the kids.
Yeah, because a billion and a half is.
It's a scary dollar.
Yeah. When you, when you look at that in the, in the county, it's six and a half for our small little county is quite a bit of money. But anyway, we appreciate you coming in tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you for running for office again and appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Good luck and good rest.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.